Mayor, I'd like to call to order the work session meeting for the borough of Elmwood Park, Mayor and Council for November 5th, 2020, to order at 7:01 PM. On roll call, council members, Fasolo absent, Goleback?
Here.
Ingui?
Here.
Pellegrini?
Here.
Wetchler?
Here.
Council President Ballastary?
Here.
Mayor Coletti?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin, and good evening to everyone here at our council work meeting. We have a lot to go through this evening, so let's get started. Whereas Chapter 231 of the public laws of the state of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the record in Herald News of Woodland Park, and by posting such notice in the office of the borough clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notices were posted on January 8th, 2020. May I have a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public here to speak, please come forth. Mr. Roberts, can we have your name and address? The mic is not working this evening, so...
I'm American, so I think my name's...
Yes, yes, do that, please, sir.
My name is Carl F. Roberts, 260 Washington Avenue. Okay, I've got two things I want to bring up. On the Boulevard, by Washington Avenue, little son of a piece there, public service did the work there, and one of those spots is sinking down.
Is this on the new pavement, Mr. Roberts?
On the new pavement that they put down.
They came back and did work after we paved the road?
No, this is on the Boulevard.
Oh, the Boulevard.
What's the cross street?
I don't know.
What cross street?
Washington Avenue. Washington Avenue or the Boulevard. Yeah, right in front of that little island.
Island there with the flowers.
Public service did some work, and one of the spots is sinking down.
Okay.
So something got hurt there. Okay. My second one.
We'll be on that tomorrow morning.
Okay, my second one. Over here, corner of East Washington and Washington, the sidewalk is too far down. Yourself, the police chief, fire engineer, DPW went down there, looked at it, said it will be worked on, okay? Now I took a ride and I saw something, there's another spot, but I can't remember the street right now. It's over here, it floods when it rains, and it's so bad right now, it's got green grass growing there. You got it almost half set, the grass is greener there than it is on my lawn. But that should be done by the person that did work. I understand money was set aside to do these repairs. Why don't we pay somebody to repair something that wasn't done right? If you do your home, you have the guy come back and do it, or you hire somebody, get the bill from them, and bring them the course, let them pay for the repair.
I'm gonna ask Mike to answer first, please.
Mr. Roberts, like you said, the mayor and I were out there with the engineers, with the contractor several times. It's not the contractor's fault, I don't think it's anyone's fault. The engineer made a recommendation to try to remediate that with a specific type of the way they pitched the road. And he said, "It may not work, but we want to try this first." Rather than putting pipe in, digging up, connecting to another sewer, and all that, it's a pretty big job. So we said, "Okay, we're gonna go up the ladder incrementally, and we're gonna try this first." It wasn't very expensive, it was kind of rolled into the job, so we tried that, and it didn't work, with the expectation that it may not work. Now, we're putting together with our engineers seventeen other locations in town, we're doing the whole project together, so we could save money on staging fees and all the stuff that goes into the job. It's gonna be bid out next week, and that one is on there, and we're gonna do it the right way this time.
The only thing you gotta do is raise the sidewalk. You don't have to rip any pipes up or anything.
I'm not qualified to say that, and I'm not sure you are, I don't mean that in a derogatory way, but we're gonna go with what the engineers and the contractors say.
It's the concrete that wasn't raised up enough.
They're suggesting we put in a... They want us to put a drain in and connect the pipe so that the water... Because it gets a lot of water there, so...
Right, that's what they're gonna do with it still. It's over a year.
You don't have to raise your hand, you can come up next, Carl.
Carl F. Roberts, 260 Washington Avenue. I'm going off of what my father said. When I spoke to you gentlemen and ladies about this over a year ago, I had pitches. The pitch is towards the property, people have to walk around onto the resident's property to get around it. Not only that, last year, we had a resident of this borough slip on ice at that exact corner. When I brought it up to you, we're going into our second winter now. This is unacceptable for the residents of this town, especially that homeowner. When I brought it up to you guys live, it should have been ramified right there on the spot. You still had the paperwork from that contractor, should have been brought right back out and say, "Why is it like this? It's not fair." I don't want to see another fall, and a resident sue that homeowner. It's not their fault. You're saying putting in a drain, that's not gonna work. You need to rip out that sidewalk and relay it down properly with the proper pitch. That's the only way you're gonna ramify that.
Well, Carl, the problem with that is, if the water's laying in the street, it ponds in the street also, correct?
It lays in the street because it's pitched towards their property.
Wait, wait. If it's... After it is a rainfall, in front of that submerged handicap ramp, there's water laying in the street, is that correct?
It's more on that sidewalk than the street.
Right, but it comes into the street. So what happens is, if you raised that sidewalk elevation, you're not correcting the pitch in the street. You put a drain right in that spot, that corrects the whole problem.
The problem is, Mayor, the way it's pitched now, with the new pavement that you guys just laid down...
Yeah.
It is pitching it to that spot, so it's gonna lay right there.
That's why we're gonna put a drain there, Carl. You're not hearing me. We're gonna put...
The drain's not gonna do anything. Because the sidewalk needs to be pitched back towards the street, it's pitched towards the person's property.
If there's water laying in the street, even though the handicap curb ramp is submerged underwater also, possibly we raised the sidewalk, but it's still in the street then, and you still got the ponding in front. You put a drain there alleviates the whole problem.
It's not... It's not gonna work.
We'll get it fixed, Carl. We'll get it fixed.
Let's take a look at the grades, and we'll work it out. Do you know where the address is at that corner for the problem?
256 Washington Avenue.
256?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else here to speak from the audience? The public, I should say. If not, I'll close the public portion. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. Continuing on with tonight's agenda, first, we have our engineers' report, and underneath that, we have item number 1A. Your numbers are going to be a little bit off because something was removed from your agenda, but 1A is current estimate number three, which is for the Memorial High School tennis courts, for your review, and if all looks okay, I'll put it on resolution for next week's meeting.
Anybody have any questions on that, with the tennis courts? Moving along.
Okay, with that being said, we now have the monthly status report, and I will let John Clemente speak on that from Alamo Group. And John, if you can just skip the items that have no change since last report at the request of the mayor and BA.
Very good. Okay, we can start with... Let's go down to item three. Rosemont Park improvements project has commenced regarding the basketball half-court. The playground is actively under construction and should be completed in the near future, so that's before winter flies. Moving on, well, we have the tennis courts as number five here, but Erin covered it in 1A. Okay, moving down, improvements to Mola Boulevard, number seven. Pre-construction meeting has been completed, contractor will complete any concrete work, but paving will not commence until PSE and G finishes their gas main work in this section of Mola Boulevard, and the contractor is coordinating his work with traffic and PSE and G, in engineering. Moving down to River Drive, we've got that covered as well as the Veterans Memorial Park at Van Riper. Model of the park has been generated to help facilitate the allocation of funds through donations. Funds are being allocated through generous donations. Engineering has determined the park is within the town's right-of-way, and a construction cost estimate and concept plans have been submitted for review. Okay, moving down to item 16, the 219 CDVG project improvements to Donner and Echo. The project has been awarded, pre-construction meeting was held, and the start of construction is being scheduled, and so far as I know, it's next week, where there will be milling and paving starting on Donner and Echo, as well as the next item, 17. It's the same contractor is working on both of these projects, and he's intending to start Gilbert Avenue as well next week. Okay...
John, let me stop you there. I think we should keep our eyes on the weather.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Painting is going to be tentative.
Tensive.
We're gonna do concrete work as far as we can...
Okay.
And then we'll have to terminate it depending on the weather.
Yeah.
Even concrete work might be terminated.
Yeah. We do get ten-day forecasts, so it should be relatively easy in this...
No, we look far ahead. We look pretty far ahead, as far as we can. We have our own sources for weather.
Very good.
Okay. Let's see, borough-wide drainage improvements, which partially we did address, and as Mike Feligno mentioned, there are a lot of locations that are being attended to here, and we are going to go out to bid hopefully next week, or the week after, and take care of a lot of these problems.
Now, John, when it comes to these types of corrections, I think our season is a little longer than normal, being that it's restricted in area in terms of paving. If you're gonna open a trench, it's only maybe two foot wide.
Right.
So I think we can take that to the limit.
That's right.
You follow me?
Yes.
Because it's controllable, it's a small area, it's not like you're trying to pave a large area.
That's right.
And if we can get the proper compaction back in the trenches and so forth...
And we can put a temporary surface down.
Right.
And if we have to mill it up in the spring, maybe it's two feet or three feet wide...
Right.
Be simple to do, and then put a new pavement down.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just to the Roberts point, we're going out to bid with the 17 items, and if it comes... If we get through that process quick enough, and there's still time going into the winter, providing we haven't had snow yet or ice, we will jump on it. And John, let's make that particular corner a priority to the contractor, once we have awarded the contract to a contractor.
Definitely.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, 19, 20, 21, let's see, 21. I guess that is it, there are no more new newses on the list. Any questions from anybody that we need to address? Nope?
We're good. Thank you. Thank you, John, be safe.
You're welcome, okay. I'll see if I can wind up the election tonight.
In the year 2525.
We're counting stones.
You're counting stones, huh?
I'll start tripping away.
Caveman probably could have got through this quicker.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to correspondence. Item number A is from the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office in regards to the Mars maintenance fee, which is what the police department uses, and the fee will remain the same for 2021, and it's just an FYI that the borough needs to remit our vouchers by April 30th, 2021, for that service. Okay, item number B is a notice of public hearing from the County Division of Community Transportation in regards to transportation funding for senior citizens and individuals with disabilities. Item number C is a letter and resolution from North Bergen Mayor Sacco asking for your support in said resolution regarding fossil fuel power plants. Item number D is a notice from the Elmwood Park Zoning Board of Adjustment for a public hearing. The reason why we received it is because the borough's municipal building is within the jurisdiction of the variance that is before them. That's all we have for correspondence, any questions? Okay, moving on to resolutions, we have from the Fire Department under item number A, a request for individual blue light permits, which is the light that goes on the volunteer firefighter's car when they're responding to a fire in their, again, personal vehicle. So this was submitted by our fire chief, and I went over them with our fire official, and he removed some that were under 18 or either resigned, and the mayor needs to sign off on them, that's why I presented it to everyone, and yes, Councilwoman Wetchler.
I have a problem with this only because I was on the Boulevard a number of times. When fireworks come down, the Boulevard, the opposite way with that blue light going, flashing, they're not going the speed limit, they're going faster. And I feel that, you know, our senior seat is with fire department, you know, not everybody, I'm not picking up the fire department itself, but I'm just saying, people are gonna see all these blue lights come flashing, they're not gonna know what to do. I'd rather have the chief... The chief, Mike, have you seen this? Have we gone over this?
I've seen it, and we don't have any jurisdiction over this.
Well, question or addiction will rid you of it.
That does not have my... Need my approval. I can tell you that it does not permit them to violate the speed limit or any other traffic laws. They have to... And if anyone sees them doing that, they should report it to my office immediately, and it will be investigated by the police department and by the fire department.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm not finished, Mom.
I'll go, please, continue.
Can you just turn on your mic, please? Sorry.
Sorry, I got a freaking mouth. It just bothers me that I'm just afraid that, you know, we're gonna have three or four police, you know, firemen coming down the street with the blue lights flashing. People are not, especially our seniors, they're not gonna know what to do, they're gonna panic. You know, I can see the police department and everything else, they know it. Truck, all different kinds of cars, trucks and everything else is gonna come down with these blue lights, they're not gonna know what's going on. And it just... Me, not anybody else, I'm not talking for anybody else, I just feel that everybody doesn't need a blue light in their police, you know, in their cars to go to a fire. If you cannot go over the fire limit, you know, the speed limit, why are you rushing to it? You know, why you want a blue light? It's not gonna make a difference. You're supposed to follow the, you know, like the chief just said, you're supposed to follow, you know, the traffic rules and everything else.
The reason for those are, the other drivers are supposed to, you know, extend the courtesy to the emergency driver and pull over. Like, I want to reiterate, they're not allowed to speed, they're not allowed to go through red lights and stop signs. If they are violating anything, the permit will be revoked. I can ask the fire department to put together some kind of social media awareness, you know, letter to residents as a reminder of what it is, if that'll, you know, make you feel a little better.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, I just feel that, what do you call... I'm not saying they're excellent, you know, I wouldn't give the volunteer fire department up for anything. I just feel that, you know, with all the people that are gonna have this blue light, I just think it's gonna be a lot for our town, with the people. We're gonna have to let the town know that if you see a blue light, you're gonna have to move over, it's a fire department coming through. You know what I mean?
I just have a question also. So I don't remember recalling seeing this before, you know, the three years I'm on here, I don't remember seeing this. Do all the other firefighters, volunteers have this already in their car?
I would imagine that this is people that don't have them. I don't know if this is a renewal or initial.
So I think these are all individuals that, over the last few years, have recently been appointed as volunteer firefighters. Mr. Kazmark may not have put it on the agenda in the past, but being that it requires the signature of the mayor, I want a resolution authorizing that signature like I do for everything else.
I know this has been in place for a very long time, maybe just a reminder to the new people getting this, that they are to follow the traffic rules, not to go through red lights and so forth for the safety of all the residents. But I know this isn't anything new, because I remember years ago, my sons had it, but I know what you're saying, that they really have to be cautious, right?
And it's these people that are coming on here, are they automatically firemen, or, you know, fire whatever? Did they go to school and everything else, or is it permanently put on it, or they're waiting to go to school, and they don't have their certificates yet? You know, that's another thing.
Gary Feligno, he's a firefighter. Is that a junior? Is that a sub? He's been a chief before, so he's on here, so maybe these are... Maybe they're his plan. I can find out more for you.
You know, because if they...
Councilman, I have one comment, if I may, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but I know of a situation, maybe six or seven years ago, where a volunteer fireman with a blue light was responding to a call, was going excessively fast, was pulled over, ticketed, and then suspended by the fire department. So I think in the extreme situations, both law enforcement and the fire department would deal with someone being unreasonable very swiftly.
The only... I'm sorry, David, the only thing is, I feel that if they are on our fire department already, they're not, you know, being... Haven't been trained yet, or anything else has not been, I guess, certified, onto the, you know, the fire department. They shouldn't have any... Anybody should have no blue lights yet. Once you go to school, and once you graduate, and you become a full-fledged fire department, you know, fireman, then you can't have the blue light. If they're just volunteering, and they haven't gone to school, they don't need a blue light, because they can't do nothing for the, you know, our fire department right now.
My understanding is that those who aren't official, or whatever you want to call it, do respond and have a certain amount of things that they can do and assist at the scene without, you know, the part that requires a certification. So there's a place and a need for people and to do different roles in an active fire. I think we should encourage that and not find ways...
No, I'm not saying that.
No, but what you're saying would basically make certain people have a little less of an advantage to get to a scene quicker, or the firehouse quicker. I don't think we need to go down that road.
Mayor, I know it's not a public comment, but Mr. Roberts is a firefighter, maybe he can explain how they use that, like, who gets that blue light?
Does the council have any problem with having Mr. Roberts, who was a former fireman, I believe he's currently a fireman, to comment on this?
Just curious to...
Please, Carl.
When you get the blue light, how long you have to be a fire?
We never got a blue... We weren't allowed to get a blue light until we were on at least two years and had schooling. That was when we were allowed to apply for a blue light. So, and we were also told, at this time you got the permit from the state, you have to obey every law. So your question, Doris, is with the speeding. Again, we were all told, you're not allowed to speak. You have... And it's a courtesy, drivers don't have to move out of your way because it's a blue light. We are not an emergency vehicle, and it's just a courtesy to get us to the scene. That's the only reason that...
So Carl, is that written in the bylaws of the fire department? A minimum two years after you're certified? Is that what you're saying?
It's not a great rule, but it's a guideline that they go by.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
Would it be okay if I asked the fire chief to give us some kind of a memo explaining how this is handled within our department, and what training there is, because I believe there should be some training associated with this, and to send out refresher training or initial training to people who are obtaining them for the first time?
Sounds like a plan.
Good?
Okay, so I'll put this on hold for now until I hear back from the BA.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay, moving on to item number B. We passed bond ordinance number 20-27 a few meetings ago, it was our capital request. So item number B is the invoices that were allotted for in that bond ordinance. We need authorizing resolutions for each purchase. So these are for, for instance, the police new body cameras, the cameras in the parks, etc. Any questions? Okay, item number C is the estimate for Riley's Outdoor Decor submitted by our DPW superintendent, and this is for the wreaths, etc., that we use during the holidays every year. Any questions? Okay, 3D is a request from our CFO regarding sale checks that were issued within the past 15 months and voiding them.
When you say steal, is it like bread, when bread goes bad?
Mm-hmm. That's exactly what that means, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, so item number E is an authorizing resolution for the borough to apply for a New Jersey DOT grant application. This is the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program, and it's for the 2020 fiscal year. Any questions? Okay, 3F is a...
Sorry, I'm sorry, real quick. This is us continuing from Philip Nord?
For the lighting?
What is this?
This is not that one. This is Streets... I'm sorry, City of Manhattan.
Transportation's Alternative Set Aside Program.
You know, this is one that I'm working on with Millennium with my traffic division for staff in and around Borough Field and in that area. We're currently getting letters from...
Well, it says sidewalk lighting improvements along Mola Boulevard. Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, it's a little different than that one.
So what is it?
It's like pedestrian infrastructure, so all different things, like...
Like maybe bike stations for people to take transit and stuff like that, you know, all kinds of stuff like that. Improvements in the sidewalks, the lighting.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Okay, so item number F we're on is a retirement compensation request from the police department, and I received this today. We had a resignation from fire prevention, so because of their vacation time remaining, they would also have a payout, so that's... So not wanting to make this individual way, I figured I'd discuss it at this point, too. So I have that for everyone to review, and the vacation only comes out to $430. So it's a retirement compensation request and a resignation vacation payout.
And this comes from our CFO, as far as...
It was from, yes, our CFO reviewed it, and so did our payroll clerk, based off of the vacation time accrued and his hourly rate.
And they okayed this?
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, 3G is a refund request from our building department regarding permits that an individual took out that no longer wishes to do the work on the home, so they're asking for a refund on their permits. Any questions? Okay, similarly, for item number H is a refund request from the recreation department for the after-school program as the service is no longer being used for this individual. Any questions? Okay, I is road opening performance bonds that were approved by our DPW superintendent, Scott Cars. It's actually just one. Okay, 3J is the resolution establishing guidelines for remote meetings, should we ever need to go to remote meetings, that was drafted by our borough attorney. This is what we discussed in the local finance notice about having members of the public and all those guidelines that the local finance notice set up, so if we do need a remote meeting, we have this in place as a just-in-case.
That means we meet by Sal's house, right? Okay.
You have espresso.
Espresso, very good.
And then 4K, lastly, 3K is the fire department volunteer change of status, so this is... so this individual's going from a junior to a regular member. Any questions? Okay, moving on to departmental reports. First, we have under item A, the library board meetings from September 21st, 2020. Next, we have our EMS calls for October 2020. This was also sent via email. And then lastly, we have our finance report for all of our departments, which is current up to October 30th, 2020, and it also includes what has been encumbered for each department as well. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Council reports, Mr. Goldback.
Already? That was bad.
You want me to elongate it?
I honestly don't have anything.
Okay, that's
Which is good.
All right. Can I start, can I start?
Sure.
Make you second, because I know you always want to go last.
No, 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 I only wanted to say October.
Mrs. Ingley, please.
Actually, speaking of that, though, I did just want to again thank the police department and Randy for the fundraiser that they did, the pink ribbon fundraiser, it was super successful. I think they raised over like $1,600, which is a lot of addresses to put a pink ribbon on. So Randy was great, he was on it, I would send him a text, I was a little bit of a pain and he was on it and right over there. So I thought it was awesome to see when I was driving through the streets and people were very grateful and heard a lot of residents' stories about breast, how breast cancer affected their lives. So kudos to the police department. And, but I believe it, he was, he seemed very proud doing what he was doing, so I, I was very happy with that. So, thank you, and progress.
Thank you. Mrs. Pellegrini?
Yes, a couple of things. Board health update, their next meeting will be Monday, November 9th at 7:00 PM, and the next gravy clinic will be held on Wednesday, November 18th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Firehouse Number Four on Mola Boulevard. Police update, 370 children attended Trucker Trunk or Treat on October 30th at our rec center. 400 bags of candy was purchased for all the children that night. It was a fun night for everyone. A big thank you to Chief Feligno and his entire department for making this event a very special night for the children. Residents Assistance Program update, on Sunday, November 8th, from 10:00 to 1:00, we will be doing our leaf cleanup for those in need who signed up. We have 21 homes to rake leaves for. We have over 60 volunteers to get the job done. A big thank you to all of our volunteers. AZEZ, A-S-E-Z, saved the world from A to Z organization, Immaculate Conception High School students, Elmwood Park Cub Scouts Pack Eight, and also some of our residents will be helping out our, our residents on that day. I would like to thank Angela Fava, our RAP coordinator, and Dion York for all their hard work on this event. And also, again, thank Chief Feligno and his department for all the background checks to keep everyone safe. Working together as a team really makes a difference in our community, so a big thank you to everybody. And that's it, that will happen Sunday, the weather's supposed to be beautiful, and I'm very proud that we got that many volunteers, and, and a lot of it was our RAP coordinators. Angela and Dion have been really working hard to get these volunteers. AZEZ has been with us, that organization, for the last couple of years, and they come through with cleanups for us and leaf removal and a lot of other things they do for us. So we're very blessed to have all these people that don't even live in this town come into Elmwood Park and want to give their time and help us. And I just have to say one last thing about the Trunker Treat. I was in a hair salon the other day and the girl that was doing hair, she said, "My little granddaughter went to the Trunker Treat and she got to take a picture with the chief." And she came, and she said she came home, I don't know, I think she was about seven or eight, and she came home and she said, "Grandma, the chief, the chief of police took a picture with me." And she was just so excited. So you don't, these little gestures by taking a picture with the children, like, it really makes a difference to them. She was just so proud to tell her grandmother she has a picture with the chief. So I thought I'd share that story with you. She was very happy. Progress.
Chief, you do realize in five years she'll be throwing darts at that picture.
She had a better picture of Bobby Love.
Very nice, though. Progress, Mayor.
That's, that's a nice story.
Yeah.
Mrs. Wetschler.
Okay, head up the library.
When it comes to me.
Okay, you can do it?
Yeah.
I also like
No, no, you can
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
That's what I asked for.
When it comes to me, then.
Okay, okay. I also like the fact that you're police, Randy, and every police officer is down. Without you guys, let me tell you, this town has come to be one big family. Everybody, praise, praise everybody, especially the police department. They're there for everybody, they help, they stop, you don't have to have a pool, so you just stop and, you know, speak to everybody. It's like a family now. It was, didn't feel that way before, and I've lived here all my life. Now you could talk to anybody and, you know, and I thank you, and thank you, police officers.
Counsel President Bellistere.
Okay, just a short report on the board of rec. We had our first meeting, it, since it's been several months since the last, on October 19th. We had some new board members came on board and, you know, we want to welcome them. And also, they got to meet our, our new rec director. It was quite a long meeting because there were a lot of questions and, and, and he was able to fill everybody in and update them on the programs with the rec and, of course, the updates of the parks as well. And everyone was so very pleased and it was a really good meeting. Progress, Mayor.
Good, good, good. That's all good stuff, happy stuff in this 2020, what a year, John. Sal and I were talking about it before the, the meeting, crazy, crazy, crazy year. Regarding the library, well, it's, it's, it's good news, finally. We, we managed to get the water main for the sprinkler put in the ground properly, backfilled properly, under the auspices of our engineer. And the only problem is, and Mr. Feligno and I were on the site, we actually, the two youngsters, him and I, actually hopped the fence to get in.
Whoa.
Now, could you imagine if there was a, a police officer coming by and seeing two, these two people hopping the fence?
I'm going to have newspapers there.
Probably praise you and clap.
But that's how important it was to us, to get the visual, the optics of what was there. The soil was wet. Make a long story short, if you take a cup and you fill it up with muddy water and then you allow it to dry, what's going to happen? The water is going to evaporate and the top, the dirt will be at a lower level because of the, the moisture contents. So you have to allow that to aerate out. To avoid any problems, we've put off the, the final paving until the spring, gives that trench a whole winter to go through. The one side's got a, a base pavement to it, we'll be able, able to open the building, use half of the park in lot, which won't have its finished coat either on it. Come the spring, we should end up with a product like we did at the tennis courts. So, that's all I have. I don't know how, how the progress is going on inside, Doris, but we did, when Mike and I did look in, there was no rug still in the building. And, yeah, I don't know, Mike, maybe we give the contractor a call just to get an update right from the horse's mount tomorrow?
Yes. Because she's in contact with the, you know, the rugs, they are waiting for the permission to go into it. So all the permits and everything is up to date, nothing has to stop now. Are you willing to put the rugs in and furniture and everything?
Yeah. And I think we're going to have to electrify the fence so that people can't hop the fence any further.
Little brass.
Yeah. Then unfortunately, as you all know, with the election, we don't know who our president is, we don't know who our council people are, and I guess you can blame it on the COVID, but that's the State of the Union here at this point. And with that, I am going to call for public comments, a motion to open it to the public?
Some of them.
All in favor? Anyone from the public here to speak?
Just a question about these blue lights. What was the item, whether or not to post them to the agenda and the people who are going to receive these or apply for them? What was the item? I know, I know
It was So I put it on the agenda, it's their application that they submit to the state to get a blue light, and it requires the mayor's signature. So every time I have to get the mayor's signature, I ask for a resolution for the council to authorize.
Okay, because I believe you or the fire chief or the person in charge has to authorize it.
Correct.
And the application goes to motor vehicle. Send JAC 13 colon 24.
Yeah.
To authorize it. They're good for four years, so as far as, and they do have to be in good standing.
Exactly, yeah, so I have them here, it's from motor vehicle, the mayor needs to sign it, but all the resolution would say is that they hereby authorize the mayor to sign them. That's all.
My question was about if they
I was going to email you, but I couldn't find your, the application show.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we have the information.
So
I didn't know, I didn't know, that's why I asked, because I looked it up, I was saying I thought you applied to motor vehicle. Okay, thank you.
So I, I guess the only remaining question on this is whether these four candidates or five candidates are certified firemen as, as opposed to, to journeyman or whatever the term
Application tells us.
Whatever the term is for somebody coming up prior to being considered a, a full-fledged fire person. Sal, do we, the
I'll be happy to pull out the statute with regards to and what if we, if anything, what qualifications are required.
Mayor, if you're signing it, I think we should have more information on it and the fire department should have some kind of at least training on it and, you know, make sure that the, the people that are obtaining these know the rules and how to use them.
Right, right. And I, I think that's Doris's, well, her point of view right from the beginning.
They have to be a fireman like far, I said, two years, at least on, on being a fireman, two years, not that you just came on last week or two weeks ago.
That might be covered in the statute, which I'll pull up.
I'm going to do that because, and, and with the concern, Councilwoman Wetschler, when you have these lights, even though it is a courtesy light, there's a potential of exposure to the municipality if some accidents happen
Exactly.
As a result of that. If it's misused or misapplied, then you have, they have problems.
Okay.
So we want to take care of it before we actually put your name
Okay. We have a, a member of the audience that wants to speak again, Mr. Roberts. We have your information, so you don't have to repeat it. This is Mr.
Years ago, Blue Ferry had a state trooper come in and he had the fire department and the ambulance corps both there. And he told us at the time, you have to obey law regulations, 25 mile an hour, that's what you do. Stop sign, you stop. And he turned around to the ambulance corps and says, "You guys are the worst to the people." And they go, "Why?" "Because you're giving them a heart attack going, even though they're half because you've got to stop like everybody else." So, but it was a state trooper that came in for it, right? And we had it in Fire Company Two and insurance film. A guy from the insurance says, "If you are going to a fire, you get into an accident and you're speeding, you're not following the laws, you're not covered." So, there is a film from that from the insurance company, and I think if you contact the state police, they'll come down, and if you want the other towns to come down, it would be a good thing. This way, everybody knows what it is.
If we pull out the rules from the ordinance, would you inform the firefighters signed for that they're going to follow that? Now have my traffic division provide training to
You can do that. And also, I'll check our, our insurance policy to see that they're covered.
They're covered, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
That's private insurance, yeah. I swear that, what do you That's not a private car. At least you hear it too, private insurance. I don't want to just
Hold on, one, one person at a time, please. Get Mr. Roberts.
That insurance is for your private car. So if I'm driving to a fire and I speed into an accident, my insurance company ain't covering me.
Yeah, because you're on the dime, you're on the dime of, of the town at that point, I would assume. You know? Okay, thank you for bringing that point to our attention. By no means are we trying to stifle these young applicants here in getting their blue light, but we just want to make sure that they've reached a point of understanding the proper traffic regulations that go along with it and are mature about the whole situation. And we will, I guess, this will continue. Anybody else here to speak from the audience? If not, I'll close the public portion. Erin, do we have any other further business?
We have executives, so if we could ask for a motion to enter into executive.
All in favor? These proceedings are now closed.
Where is the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and where is the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist? And where is the governing body wishes to discuss litigation, legal reports, and personnel? Minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.